It is eight fifteen. We'll get the party started here. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
And also I approve the correction of the minutes.
Okay.
Second. If you're licensed.
Done. I'm good emotion, and I second to approve consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Anything to say, Mr. Travis?
No, sir.
Just here to listen.
Just here to listen.
Good deal.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, Larry, Julie, and I, quiet people.
For now, anyway. Thank you, Larry.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion approved count payable? Uh, that was.
That was it.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Um.
That's right, I'm gonna finish.
Mr. Hurst. You ready?
Okay. You want me to go?
Don't you?
Alright, we've got our weekly press release.
Here we go.
Um, you can see last week's data and compare it with this week's data. Last weekend eleven positive cases, this week we cut twenty one. So that brings our total of positive cases to hundred and seventy. Hundred and seventeen homes are recovered. Three thousand four hundred eighty two is the total number of individual tests. And our rolling positivity rate is seven point four.
I got a question on these confirmed cases. Um, I have a buddy that was positive. And he was testing and testing like every couple days. So if. If he had five tests in the week.
Our numbers go up five as an individual test.
He counts as a five.
He counts as tested five, he counts as one positive.
One positive.
May I ask your questions?
Yep.
Alright, um, any questions on the COVID nineteen updates? Not, I wanna talk none anymore.
Do you have any?
I do.
We, uh.
But you're giving us the right way.
Well, yeah, I have some.
The one thing, one thing I wanna mention going on is. You're in your department as. Over the last two weeks, talking about planning, and it will be possibly a vaccine coming out sometime in time. Possibly for the end of year, uh, to help plan it. And in place, we're going to do a onsite one of the fencing, uh, which, you know, the county has plans for that as other counties. Or whether we do a drive. Um, application, which that can be done. And so those are still a lot. A lot of that depends on weather, things like that. I think it's still having to play out here. This is probably with this different vaccine, uh, or vaccines. Depends on what company or what grouping they use. They have, it adds you unusual handling responsibility, you know, for, uh, people. In other words, there's requirements for handling it story, basically. And it's a little more extreme than what, than public health type you're used to with other vaccines and that. It's purely chilling, it's gotta be kept at. So those are some things doing which I have to be concerned about. Um, also facilitating the public, there is some stuff coming out from I part public health to manage their collaboration unit with federal agencies. And things about vaccine administration, uh, questions and answers. And I think the key is to get on the front end of this. Start educating the public and answering the questions upfront preemptively before it were reactionary. So I think these are things that public health probably pushing out through various media sources. And the website, things like that, social media, start educating the public before the vaccine gets to them. Cause there's gonna be a lot of apprehensive, apprehension of this, undoubtedly. Um, and I'm not gonna say it's like flu vaccine every year, uh, cause some people get it, some people don't, uh, cause this is different. And is it, you know, what's the need to, to get this, you know? And is it gonna work, is it gonna work for everyone? What level do you need in here, you know, when you get? Those are all questions that people are gonna wanna answer. And because of safety, okay, you're concerned about it with all workers, things like that. So, um, I think those are things that are gonna be coming up, we're gonna get on the front end of, and, uh, stay with it. These numbers that in the last week, twenty one, uh, they alarmed, they don't alarm. Uh, because, you know, we figured that, well, school started nails, and we're not saying this is about the school, sorry, okay? It's just part of the, uh, how it's evolving. Uh, isn't going to get worse that way for us, undoubtedly, we know that. And it's just because we're social, people are tired, people are wanting air action, uh, people are wanting more freedoms. Uh, and it's tough to keep people focused, just do right, you know, wash your hands. Situation awareness, don't feel good or something, just check it out, you know, be, be smart, basically. On what's helping your family, your family's health. And that's the bottom line. Um, I think the schools are moving very hard as they can, undoubtedly. And, uh, and I think they need to keep, keep steady course. We need encouragement to do that. I know, uh, Julie has collectively with school districts, with leadership, is stay focused to investigate. And then see how you can do a little bit better. Um, you know, this homecoming was this weekend in the parade, there's been a lot of pros and cons with it. Uh, we see how it pans out. I know the school wants to do a school day Saturday night. Uh, the Appalachic director has reached out to me for some assistance, uh, in the area of cones, he knows I have one of these large tall cones. And we use it across country every year. He wants, they, they're planning on groups attempt in pots. And that's gonna be interesting to see how that all plays out. And so, and they're gonna put, I don't think that in a travel football field. So they've already put that out to the, has been put out to stadium, say you gotta buy tickets or whatever. So just patients being arrested, we say, I need students to take part in that. And it's not that long of an event either, it's gonna be down in football field. So, um, I gotta get with the, uh, AD on that here, how he doing tomorrow, and how he wants to pull that off. Uh, I don't like some of these stuff like that, talking about whatever, uh, to try and do something to students. I do have students studying though, because, you know, the student is gonna stay in there, it will pour out. Uh, that's gonna be up to be decided, I know there's been a request from parents and volunteers, and for example, chaperoning. I'd just like to win a prom dance, just to, to the public, um, to beg you to help, help, you know, have the kids have the best time they can, you know? But on the other hand, make it safe.
Right, I talked to a former, um, high school student about the potential, what they're doing, and they said, well, we, we're in circles anyway. But we usually have a big circle, and then, you know, there's others, and she says, there's always bump in the right area, people over here. And then there's the big circle, and then, you know, but she says, that's kind of what we did, but we still moved around a lot too. And I said, doesn't sound like that's been right.
There's a lot of.
Um, the, the other thing is, oh, you tried, it was the first night of our house. And there's been a lot of stuff from the city and budget.
And that's another.
About the run house.
Is that the one, what they were, where it was?
Park place, park place off of Green Street.
Yeah.
And the, and especially with the city, um, the city is reluctant to give them parking in the park grounds area, which that leaves in Green Street, they do want the green streets, there will be a parking there. And so I know the city has approved the chief police to take money from the owners for overtime, bringing more law enforcement out. Uh, it exists, I know that you, you all know the engineer was approached, uh, by I S code. And that, uh, according to state statute, you know, and court, he basically addressed that, you know, thank you, Mr. Frouch for. Two three zero two zero I J Avenue property, because somebody was observing him about a week ago, and said, calling me, why do I own the land? And they're, well, they were wanting to use that for stack parking, so then I gotta go place the property, and that's the one that's going up. So I think we have a problem right here. I think there's gonna be a problem with, uh, with, with the local law enforcement's gonna have to deal with. And it will become a problem for, because, uh, I. You know, there's a lot of transferred traffic to a resource center in that road, that they go every which way.
Can't see very good either when it starts.
No, no, and there's a lot of dust in that.
I don't know why they don't let them park at the amphitheater.
They, they, that was advocated, first meeting I went to, they advocated, see younger guys, uh, it was advocated, they wanted to get up near the tower. And I advocated, said, no way I want to be in that current infrastructure, and the city totally supported that. They want anybody in their top wandering around the property at night without some sort of security. And it was advocated that, you know, you could use that lift, amphitheater, they gotta hire security people, insurance jackals, to patrol, it's like you wouldn't even have a festival.
I chose two of those ones.
This is three gentlemen out of Omaha that owns one in Omaha, and I think they own the other one out west.
They own three, only three in.
And, and they're very aggressively.
Is there a group staying?
They're.
I don't think so.
These guys are younger guys, and, uh, they're.
I can't remember the guy's gentleman's name, called the office. Um, looking for information on how to close I S road, that's when I get the memo written from the attorney's office stating, yeah, Iowa code states parking on I S roads. Not gonna be allowed, prohibited because it won't pass, uh, clearance zones required for parking on, uh, a non-marked road. And I also, I gave them a call, didn't get a hold of them, a voice call, saying, hey, I was right, there's no parking, we can just close this road. Larry stated, and never did get a call back.
I just figured I'd have to go frame the parking where they can park, but a lot of the kind of blocks, the river probably, and out of county, and they will, uh, park wherever they can get away from parking. And, uh, and then we're gonna have an issue, so I think, uh, we're just gonna have to see how Friday night works. They, they, the amount of cars they could have, we're in trouble. You know, they're in trouble, the city's in trouble, and possibly they could bleed over underneath the, the river overpass. Um, I do know, I saw the city officers live last week, driving around Green Street, I S area.
Yeah, can you hear that?
And they basically were handing flyers out to the property owners, and normally papers through by insurance partner. So I knew it was a tip, so.
I did talk to Goose about it too, and, and he agreed with me that there shouldn't be parking on I S road, and so.
So I think they're handing flyers out to all the property owners, and I think they're going out several blocks. They're way over by the soccer field, they're on Bitch Beach, and parking or something with the officers from police department. I think they're handing flyers out against the house, and start operations here, because they may have, people may park as far away as that and block down that street. And that means they're gonna be parking wherever they can, and they try to park people's property, cause there is one large block there, the, the White Street Soccer Field. And those people have that posted, it's not big signs, but they know a lot of people on their property. So I think.
What can, what can they park in their parking?
So where's the house gonna be?
There's very little.
It's right here. This is the road that goes up, uh, to the tower site.
Right.
And this, they have very little parking, this is really not good parking here, never was in park places there. You couldn't, it was a heck of a get in there, and they've got a hearse sitting right here now. There is not a lot here, they do not want people parking. Because when they were coming in, they're getting their tickets, they're getting their tickets here, and they're going back and entering the thing here. In other words, it's optional ticket, so they had an issue. They wanted to come in, the amphitheater road that goes up behind the amphitheater, you know, the, the hard surface, still got, goes, I'm sorry, where you at here? Yeah, it goes up here, there was an area right in here at one time with park places operating, that they were gonna put a sidewalk in there, that was the first meeting I went to. And it never got done, and that was for some of the residents of park place that could walk to go to the park. Easy access to walk, uh, you know, caseworkers would take them up there, they go into the park, come back down. That, and they were talking about possibly, could they do that? And have the public park here, park down the main parking lot or whatever, cause you know, this is at night. And then they would walk up, come down this way, and that was an option, the city didn't like that option. I mean, they didn't go forward with it. And, uh, uh, the second meeting I didn't get to, I think somebody who crashed went to the third meeting I was unaware of. So, uh, I, I don't know why the city is, is not wanting to, uh, accommodate, the city's gonna have people parking on the property. I guarantee you, people parking at Lake Park, and they're gonna try to wait to get into this.
Right.
There is a fence, they do have some fencing up here, but this is a, uh, natural hill, topography. On the gate here, we got a gate here, and then I have fence post that I stuck into the ground, cause there's some trees right here, we used to have people drive by there. But, you know, people can get up there if they wanted to, on the terrace, we all know that. But that was just to mitigate that, so I don't know, and you know who owns this? Charlie Daxler owns it. Charlie Daxler's involved in this.
The people who are running it are renting that house next year there.
He's not called, he's letting the property staff there. He's not what I said.
But they, they do have parking options on their property.
They, they could.
I don't see what, what good it'll do to have a parking down through here, or.
If they don't allow them to park on there, the thing is, there's just not enough parking. You go down, look there, it just, it's not as much as you think. You know, parking down, you got fifty, sixty cars at a time or whatever, you know, just not enough for it. So they were wanting, again, as you said, they were looking to the city to help them with this, and then get the road, and then maybe parking lot, to reach some of that. So, uh, I know that I saw.
So they do have weekends, or are they doing?
It's Friday, Saturday, and then when they get into October, uh, they even have one weekend, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then they got a Sunday in there, near Halloween. So they go, so, uh, it's a pretty aggressive schedule, and as they get closer to Halloween, they just start adding days on it. So, but they were actually handing flyers out down here to these people, wait, where are we at?
Right.
I'm not out far enough, it's over here, no, this, yeah. This parcel over here, they're handing, police department, I saw them way over here handing, handing flyers out.
Well, maybe they'll be like the state fair people, you know, they'll have a stick that come and park in my yard.
Well, if those people know their land, they wanna make some money, they might as well park in their property.
Exactly right.
And then make some money from that.
I mean, that's how.
When they call you folks, it's like.
That is, that's how the Wayne.
Twenty-five bucks, you can park there.
So if these three guys are, they're gonna see how, it's, yeah, see how these people actually repark along, uh, kinda route.
Stay away from Ives and Green Street on Friday night.
Please.
Yeah.
I hate this shit happening.
Never, do you hang out on that street much?
No, I, I don't.
Oh, okay. Well, this will be interesting, there are three guys from the house.
I think I'll leave the game.
I think there, I think there's three guys.
Take immediate.
I bet it'd be a fun place to haunt.
And our favorites, which are this place, so they have all that.
I don't know what to do with that, he's just, there's a connection, I know where she's from. He was, he showed, he's the one who wants to call us, and he's, he even called us. We'll see on that, so we've got a couple of that coming in, and then that's getting off, which they, uh, they're a lot to worry about, and, uh, basically, uh, basically go for red.
Interesting. Alright, uh, I wanted to do a little bit of a minute update review, starting with number two on the, um, the review.
I got one, thanks, well, no, you didn't, but I mean, it's a lot, the one I got.
Uh, so our, uh, care's, uh, request is underway, we've been working with Owen Dean, he's our, he's our guy, and he's been assigned a number. And he, he reaches out to us several times a week, wanting more detailed documentation, which we are supplying for him. And I wanted to give you a budget update on the care, so the total outtakes from Iowa County is just over one ninety-one. The original amount we requested for the resolution that was written was one twenty-five. Um, Owen reached out and said that we could ask for just under seventeen thousand dollars more with the adjustment required based on our public health labor. Talking to Carol, and she said, go ahead with it. So we adjusted the amount requested to one forty-two six, that did not require any adjustment in the rest of the ship, I thought mine. So that leaves dollars available for next round at forty-eight eight, and that second round will be due on October fifteenth, which will, I mean, that's just a whole week's round in the corner here. Um, any questions on the cares update?
Uh, I have a, I have a, um, a lot of questions, but I have a, I talked to the state. Um, unfortunately, the county has to put that in the general fund, it has to come in as a revenue to the general. Now, where they choose to resolute or, you know, give extra funding to is, is their choice. But it, because, because the money comes to the county, it's for the county, it has to go in our general, start to.
And then we can take forty grand or whatever we need to make their approval, so that's the one thing, thank you, Carol. Um, so Carol, uh, assisted as we worked on amendments for public health budget. And I just wanted to review those figures with you, so we have those carryover funds from last year. Um, you guys remember that, can we talk about it at all? Okay. And then we have, so that came up to thirty thousand dollars. And then we have new sources that are relevant that were not in this year's budget, which includes some additional FEMA funds we were able to secure for the flood. The Bern J Grant and the Iowa West Foundation Grant were total fifty-seven seven, so these are new sources that I needed to amend up for. And then I included the cares funding, which we're going to the general fund, it seems like, this is what I talked about. So in light of that, I wanted to look at amendments to our line item budget for this year. Um, just to kinda keep things straight in my own mind, the, the items that you see that are included. That is for a new physician that is coming out of the Bern J and Iowa West Foundation, a new physician. That will be a part-time parents' teachers educator and part-time mentoring coordinator. So one full-time physician, and we hired her, her name is Brenna. And there'll be some expense, um, with her salary, education training, some dues and memberships, because she's a nationally certified educator, will have to go through that process. And then, of course, the bikers, hyca, hypers and insurance related to hiring her, so the new expense for that employee comes up to just over fifty-two thousand dollars. And then I have highlighted in red on this page, items that we want to amend up. They might have, um, public health emergency and the cares act, we've had some expenses that we want to bring forward to you. Um, just not spending a whole lot of time, but going over some that are a particular concern is I would like to hire a part-time temporary L P M. That would be a position that I'd like to hire on October first, and then bring for June thirtieth. That individual would assist my nursing department in being able to do contact tracing. And as Larry spoke to, this fall, we are expecting to do a high number of vaccines, both for flu, that's a big push that public health wants to get out there more than ever. We'd like to see people get their flu shot, and then we will be transitioning right after that to hopefully have some COVID vaccines. So, um, we're gonna have a lot of work in that area. So we'd like to hire an L P M, because she could do the contact tracing and, um, like, bring some vaccines for us. We added additional money into board of health, that is money that we could use for COVID response and activities that will be required to do at this time. We increased custodial supplies slightly as we're having a lot more expenses in our, our claim related to COVID nineteen. We increased office supplies, the information technology hardware is the reimbursement of the, um, money that we submitted to cares for our, um, computer systems. We have a significant, um, increase in ask for medical supplement or lab supplies, and also for vaccines. Um, we did receive actual extra funding from the Iowa Department of Public Health for vaccines, an extra six thousand dollars, and that would be a lot of increase, um, move for supplies. Um, we are spending more in obvious applications, legal notices related to COVID nineteen, identity and community. Um. I'm just gonna, a lot of these are just minor, so I'm gonna, the ones that might stick out to you, if you go down to the O A H in red, that's this ladies family center services project. We're asking for another six thousand dollars in that line item. We did get, um, approval from a grant related to adolescent health to purchase individual bed sanitizers. For every student in Iowa County with a little cookie, so that you can put them on their backpack and just have them to go all the time, and they're easily refillable.
Julie, we're just, we're gonna have to go for her education training, we're gonna be there for the machine.
Well. We used to have to send her remote, right? And go for a very intensive training, now it's all available online. Okay? And that's covered, okay? Um. You will see probably one thing that, that will catch your eye is because we have, um, significant moving expense. At public health, we are really anticipating moving forward to moving to a new location, particularly in the COVID nineteen world. Having a facility that's easy entry, that we can have people just walk in the front door, um.
Okay, Julie, I did not put that twenty thousand in the budget amendment at this point, because I thought, we'll do another one in January, so it'll be a worst case scenario. But I wanted the board to weigh in on that, and I had to get all that stuff done last week. So I left that out for now, but it's a potential for the board's decision. I don't know, you're talking that we could maybe move in December. Is that still kind of your timeline?
I still overlook that.
So just, I have to give sixty days notice to my current landlord, am I, I know I keep pushing to it, I, thank you for your patience. Would it be early December or late December?
I would say late December.
Late December.
Be safe.
Okay, January first might be really a date for public health to think about.
Alright, um, do you have any concerns with the moving expense? That might include some money for us to be able to get some summary check of location, that's gonna be a huge. You, we are talking a bit, our current office is in over a month's advance. Okay, we just had a motion, obviously, we're up there, but we've got a solution on the doc, so we're excited on that.
So all of that doesn't have to come into the new building, right? Okay. All of that, say that again, not all of the files of.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the NAS, no, we're not bringing it.
Oh. No, we are downsizing.
Good, good, good.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna have a significant hand this fall, but, and we need to.
Yay. Okay, super.
Okay. And then we put some money into miscellaneous COVID nineteen funds. Um, we'd like to be able to pay for contact tracing, which we're providing up over the weekends. Um, and other expenses related to COVID nineteen. And then you see some additional hyca and hypers expenses related to a, um, part-time temporary L P M that we're hoping we can hire. We're looking actually for twenty-nine hours, like I said, for months old for treatment.
And it's, they can't be considered temporary, you know, that's what, or, I mean, e- even though that's what they'll know, be, only because, you know, the period of time is longer.
Oh, that's a sense.
Yeah, so, but you'll, yes, but you'll tell them, this is a temporary.
So on here is, but I'm already. We are, we are going to hire them, and you know what, if, if the need continues and we're able to, I am sure staffing the nursing department. Um, I would like to potentially be able to be a part-time L P M, but we'll see in, um, June, how we're doing, how our money looks, and what the activities are. Uh, so I have quite a few line item adjustments, Carol, how will that work if the cares money doesn't, you'll, you'll just have to put that.
I'll, I'll make the, I mean, I'll put them in the line items, cause it goes in Patrick's too, so those are the places, I mean, yeah.
So we'll have an entry on the, the revenue side?
No, you will not have it, I will have the revenue side, you won't, you won't be able to offset it on your side, you won't be able to see that, it's gonna be coming from us. So you're not, I could only, I can't.
For revenue, but with big expenses, how does that work in your mind?
That's, that's called a budget amendment.
Well, that sounds like farming.
Hey, I gotta, I gotta say, join the farming world, it works wonderful.
That makes me really nervous.
Yeah, the revenue's coming in, it's just not in your line item.
Expenses just one.
Just so you know.
Just once, I'd like public health not to look so rough.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You have twelve other departments.
Yeah.
If I have a revenue, can I just please have a minute? Answer, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. But is it, it, so it's okay to have these expenditures?
Then you're good.
And when do they take it back?
October the sixth, we will actually do the amendment that day during that, and then I'll put the money's on this.
And all of, all of these amendments that you're proposing will be paid for in the cares act?
Can, correct.
None of them, none of them are the general fund?
No, actually, we, I mean, it's very likely into the year we won't, we may, we may not utilize them all, they may stay in the general fund. I still believe in being very fiscally responsible, we'll use what we need, there, there may be extra that we, that we don't have to, and that'll go in the general fund and.
But none of this is coming out of the general fund?
No. No.
But what the, okay, so this is Julie and I had this conversation the other day, and this is really hard for her too. Those revenues, that thirty thousand that she got in last year, which we said, you can spend them this year.
Sure.
It bothers her because she wanted a revenue on show on on this side, and I said, we can't, cause they revenueed in the last fiscal, but you were given the ability to spend them in this year. So that's how that works, so she got those.
So from an accounting perspective, I would like a revenue to match an expense, I'd like to be able to report to you and my board of health that it's, uh.
Ask them for way too much.
Well, it's, it's fifty-four percent of the year, and I have seventy percent of my revenue, and I've only expended at fifty-three percent, I want there to be some math.
You're a rich department, what are you talking about?
Richard, I don't, I don't know how exactly to present my fiscal information to you and my board, when I have expenses approved and no revenue dropped in. Except other than I will have Richard and we'll just talk. When I have expenses approved and no revenue dropped in, except other than I will have Richard and we'll just talk it through.
Okay.
I would like to fully understand this because I think I can comply when I understand. I, I just wish your auditor would understand.
She doesn't want to remember my landlord.
Your bookkeeping methods do not make sense.
Julie, I just wish the auditor could say, you're good Julie.
That's all I'm looking for here.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, um. That's what I have for you in regards to amendments and we'll operate based on that budget and we'll see where we go.
Okay. Good job.
The the only other thing that I would um have you think about is we have that just under fifty thousand dollars and we would have to submit a workup. And that would be for the months of August and September.
And I know Patrick has found, we have some expenditures coming in in the technology side on one, um several big ones. So I was estimating what he gave me in this ballpark right now, there may be, after he spends what he's spending, there may be fifteen thousand left.
And do you want me to submit the workup for the second round?
Sure, because I'm sure you'll get that.
And what's what's left after Patrick, do you, what do you want the fifteen?
Well, then I would assume you should be able to get it, I would then our money is.
Going for a surprise. He, okay, Patrick's already uncovered, he's already approved too, so.
Yes, and he has several, he has another, this this project, this thing right here is gonna go to Mr. Corey for his new building.
Right.
But the other.
And the board is getting a new one that will actually have a touchscreen and they can actually use to get into Zooms and things like that. So we're getting a new one approved and Corey gets this. And um and there are some other things that, I mean, the website and several other things that.
The website, I think you guys approved and then we're.
That we approved it, but it isn't, it hasn't come out of these dollars currently, so it comes out of the next.
We want.
And then there's a few other things that he came up with that will. So Julie.
He only talks about.
He knows what's allowed, because he said, there's there's a lot of technology things he'd like to have, but he also knows there's a limit on what he can put into the COVID.
We gotta be smart with using this here, you know, she's she's for, that's also a reason, and that's why I only input is that, you know.
Yes.
You know, with federal dollar, you know, it was being passed by whatever, it was gonna work here and after nine eleven, there's millions always came down. So they paid right to the county, you know, you know, made to spend, allow them for some, then it went to regions. And, you know, people were buying stuff with like cameras and locks and stuff, you know, and there was other possible needs based on operations and for, you know, radiation.
Well, we also talked about the um new drinking fountain, where you put your deal in there, that would be, I've got to get a hold of them.
So that's just, we just wanna be, we just wanna be smart, yeah, that's what I.
I think Chad has.
He got those.
Yeah.
I need to get a hold of him.
That would be a great idea, Carol.
He's good, that's good.
Yeah.
The other thing to think about is just because we submitted it and we think these are our numbers and until the checks are available, we don't know.
Right.
Exactly, they they are auditing this and and we have not had those dollars. It's not an ideal plan.
So what is your wish to hire her?
Part-time person, who wouldn't, didn't want to pay a cost.
Right now. I mean, but I I can wait. Well, you can still, you can still get the process, Julie, because.
Uh I do, I am meeting with my board of health on Monday and I would have to run that by, and I can't imagine they having a problem if I have the funds to support it, but I.
So basically, October one.
October one is your goal.
Well.
And that's ambitious if I.
That's very ambitious because there's not a week for it, I mean, that doesn't give you time to advertise and post and it goes through a.
Still, I hope I won't get it.
Yeah, it won't be the first, no.
First part of October, so board, please. Okay.
Hey guys, what do you think?
Well, that's not a motion or.
No, it is, it's it's in, it's in, they're in the, it's in the budget amendment that's gonna be, I mean, I had to do it last week, so it's already there.
Okay.
You've got an action item for member request.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, I guess that, you know, you've allowed her, and I don't know if you maybe just wanna say for her well benefit, that you've allowed the carryover funding. Into the share for her and um CARES CARES dollars to be dropped into her fund, would that make you happy truly?
Well, yeah, because I, because I'm so good with this, I just, I don't really know how to keep on track with what I have and what I don't have. It doesn't show up on my records and everything and there's just people who are excited and I'm surrendering to that, but it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, full half of areas, once the new amendment passes and the auditor sees you adjust line items at appropriate budgets to those entrances. And we just have to follow up with the auditor on that, to ensure that most specific line items you all discussed gets adjusted accordingly to those levels. Approved by the public here, so that's how it works and stuff like that, we really like to, we really put that in a safe category, we're gonna keep patients in here, you know.
So I just look like I'm. That's what it is.
It's just gonna readjust it.
Alright. Thank you, yeah, thank you, have a great one.
That's good.
You're welcome. Sorry to reflect the bus.
How are you?
Good.
Oh, no.
Was that one of the.
Yeah.
Oh, with strings, strings attached.
Uh. Uh I have no utility permit history, board. And you guys, I gave uh John Stacey's hard chief of uh Oak Township, who heads up to come out for driveway variance requests. You guys are ready? Car, somebody clean.
Correct.
Go, go up there checking out and then stop on Gaston Avenue. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta reel up.
Gonna step out for a while.
You're gonna think that when you send me a bill, deny it and send me a bill, poor.
Well, you never know.
So you.
Okay, okay, come back later.
What's the problem with?
Uh it's a, it's not even have a separation, um and it's also wider than forty-five feet, so that's why.
For this fire station.
Yep, so it's already over the forty-five foot width limit. And also there's gonna be no separation, it'd be a one to two driveway on the east side, north, on the north side. And kind of the condition that I think we should put on it is that they need to put a drain in with um before the street. That way we don't get water flowing onto the road.
So totally reshaping it is what you're saying?
Here's their existing driveway, they want to put, they wanna drive around uh here. And instead of driving around and making that corner, they wanna just extend the driveway and fill in the ditch here.
Is that a ditch right in there?
That is a ditch, so we'll have to extend, we'll connect onto that culvert, replace that one.
Make that wider.
Yeah, and so it'll be a driveway from here to here basically, even though that's separate, it'd be a shared driveway. But this one.
Both those driveways are theirs.
No, so this one is this landowner, so it would be a shared driveway and they just purchased that uh last year or something like that. But that's why I kinda wanted to take you guys out for this.
He just wants it to be.
Is she okay, they could expand her driveway?
The other landowner?
Right, next.
We have not contacted them yet. It wouldn't be on, it would be adjacent to the fire department, it wouldn't be adjacent to her land.
So we're not going to expand a little bit on her side also then?
No.
Would it touch your driveway?
It it would, it would touch the driveway, yeah, it'd be, it'd be one continuous driveway basically from here, right here.
Yeah. Not make that a little bit wider.
Yeah, we wouldn't extend it any further.
Okay, okay.
Do you um, okay, how do we, we say return in a year?
We have, it's just out of order.
Okay, so what, okay, so what'd you say is?
Safety distance was fine and was denied for uh separation.
Safety is good, so I make a motion to approve the driveway variance on Gaston Avenue, east of two fifty street.
I will second that motion, is there any discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I abstain.
Why?
Yeah, what's your problem?
Yeah, I get it.
Sorry. Twenty-one, twenty-two? Twenty, twenty-two, sorry, it's a twenty-two.
Today, yes, I was like twenty-one, twenty-two, what are we, twenty-one and then twenty-two?
And then I'll make a motion to approve the driveway variance for the Oak uh Township Fire Station.
Second. Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Uh I just want you, as long as you're up here to comment, but uh.
Requirement for trench strength.
They have it.
Well, okay, tell me again.
Condition, uh approval of condition, the uh trench strength will be added. At the edge of the right away.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. So just the, oh, this is just the new buyout sheet there, that's not the bid sheet there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, for the removals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, the first two are just not, I mean, they'll go over them, they just emailed them to me a little bit ago and I printed them off. So they're gonna go over it on Zoom.
Zoom, very quick.
Okay, shouldn't take very long.
Get my nails done.
Shouldn't take very long at all. I like when you have all the names.
Yeah.
That was, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's, it's a lot easier on.
So retriever discs, I'd be glad you get that, so you can get it going.
There's some lumps of grass that.
Well, lots of roads, it looks like a cow path.
Yeah, it's.
I mean.
It needs a little help there.
And did we have the amount on that, Corey?
Yeah.
Okay.
The disc, okay, the disc grater, is that what we're doing now?
Yes, so searching for approval of purchase of retriever disc grater, for the grater, it's a grater attachment. Amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Sixteen thousand five.
We discussed it last week.
It's a um, it's a, what's the brand again?
Cat. Yeah, it's a grater attachment, we demoed it, so spring, pipe results and that with it.
Warranty, um what's, what's?
We get it, we'll, we'll. Uh, give mark of the year or two year warranty, we're sold, we're compusing that, is that the purchase?
You can replace disc blades just like a regular disc, at the thin corner?
Yeah, they're about, they're about that thick.
Okay.
And it's built, we'll uh, we'll be rotating it through districts. We'll see how it goes, maybe another one, we'll be looking at another one, but we'll start with one, hoping I've been rotated, it could use it out of the.
Okay, okay.
Can you provide me a copy of that or?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of this retriever disc grater for sixteen thousand five hundred by Cat.
Second, any further discussion? Want all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. All those, motion carried.
Actually, both of them we can pull up again when our guys.
Oh, he wants to blame the river rats out there.
If we would have had this culvert cleaner, we would have had a flood, you understand?
Right, right, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, okay, Carol, sure.
We've been taking care of, we've been taking care of Fran the problem too.
Oh, you know what?
They're on the end of it.
She's ready for supervising, did you know that?
Turn it back on, Richard.
You do know that, okay.
She's ready for supervisor. I took two uh. Is it on? I don't know.
Oh.
Usually the free.
Thank you. I think we're on, I, did, did Lonnie get us back on, on here on another video, it is, isn't it?
Good.
I have no idea.
Okay, and so we know her, doesn't it?
It's recorded, yeah, we, we, yeah.
That, yeah, okay, and it's live, okay, I think so, okay, hopefully. Patrick, go back.
Yeah.
Before you do this part, so we'll get it in there for you.
She's a real girl, like the. Uh for the culvert cleaner, uh attachment for um backhoe or gradle, um. Amount total, it, shipping handles includes two extension tubes, four thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy, four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Includes two extension tubes, did you say?
Yes, two six-foot extension tubes. Which will look better.
And this is what?
Battle Armor. The R and B.
Four thousand four seventy, right?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, I make a motion to purchase, you've budgeted for this, Corey.
Yes.
To purchase a culvert cleaner excavator attachment for four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars plus two extension tubes by Battle Armor.
Any further discussions? Motion made in seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, here.
General discussion, um. I had an item Lonnie wanted to discuss, um he brought up to me this weekend, get on, I'll, I'll brief you guys.
They'll be back.
Quickly, uh you guys are working, or the county's working with Western Iowa Network for fiber um installation. And they're, they're, they've been in contact with my office as far as the utility print applications. We do have a one thousand dollar pre-inspection fee that's being charged to every, every utility company. Um they, they kinda questioned, um questioned it, questioned me about it uh last week. And I said, well, you guys have paid it in the past, actually, so um I don't see why there's a change. I do realize you aren't working for me on this, but I expect you guys to follow. The, the application process. So if they may be coming and asking for any questions, I'm not sure, but Lonnie kind of talked about it. I see bringing it to your attention. Um I will say they paid it in the past, we actually have a little.
So what's different?
That, uh we, we treat all the, all the applications as same type.
Right, right.
I don't know if they have something new working for them and they're questioning it or what, because they, they didn't seem to think that they paid it in the past. They have.
They have.
In fact, their last utility permit, we, uh they haven't gotten reimbursed, their inspection, free inspection fee yet because they still haven't corrected.
Right.
Some trench failures that they had, so I like having that because that's how they come and fix the problem, you know, reimburse them, so.
Right.
Was there anything in the application where? Did we go ahead and give their money, uh they have the project, could we return?
That's what we do, we, we reimburse ninety percent of this pre-inspection fee.
So what's this inspection fee, remember when USL and some of those spiral and they tore up the road, you didn't fill the ditches in right?
Exactly.
And so then we had to go back and use our expense of doing a bat.
Kevin Battle for two years to get.
Exactly right.
Seventy thousand dollars, is that true? There's.
Right, right. Right, right, that's the deal.
I think that's when Kevin and Paul had it, been around earth ever since I.
This is how I feel with things construction, it is what it is, and this is a permit fee, and.
Like I said, I.
I, I.
I wouldn't look, uh, yesterday.
I'm gonna pay it.
Ninety percent or more of the application gets ninety percent of that, that, uh, deposit back, so.
Because they've done it right.
Yeah, but our, our inspection's pretty, pretty, past efficient. We're not charging, let's go out, let's.
Okay, uh, on this, are they gonna be going down the road, are they gonna be going down the shoulder?
They'll be feeling a little bit of, I, I always tell them, I always tell them, I want you in the back of the right way, I want keeps, uh. Save it for contractors for replacing it, save it for travel company, it keeps them out of, uh, if we're gonna extend the roadway ever, upgrade the road, they'll, they won't have relocation charges to them. Um, and so, so there's a lot of reasons why, I always just question the back of the right way, I understand a lot of places, that's not. That's doable, um, there are lots of steep, four slopes, lots of back slopes, so they will be in the shoulder, some areas, and. Four slopes in some areas, I haven't seen, um, their application yet, or their way out yet, so, but just to compen, um, their initial design. I, I didn't know that, I, I told them, prefer in the back slope, but I understand it needs to be shoulder.
Some of these places got so much stuff now, I don't know, I think you just throw a dart here.
Yeah, I think the, uh, they're crossing, or they're gonna be two hundred twenty first street for a while, that's really hard to find.
I've got three covered up my road and one out in the field.
And you don't have ice feet yet.
No.
You'd imagine what, I went through when I was a roadway designer, Phoenix, trying to do utility location, and Phoenix roadways, and you had about twelve different.
Oh, gosh, I bet.
That was terrible, I did not want to like those.
Oh, is there any chance that we could get your guys to mow down by the entrance to the back door? Um, where our election equipment is, the trees have gotten kind of high.
Oh, back there behind?
Yeah, yeah, they would, because they do it with machinery, they have to pass, they can, there's three.
Richie, why don't they have blood in your field?
Why do they?
Why would they do that?
Never own, put it, put it in the road anymore. Got three in the road.
Give her up from her mom.
One on each side, one in the middle.
If you're out, give her to my mom.
Really?
We got one in the road.
For a week, you give a week.
I gave her.
I got a posse.
All the same, same company.
Hold on.
Oh, you gotta give her back.
I got, um, Century Link, which is now changing to Loomis, Alufa.
Oh, they got bought out.
Yeah, I don't think they got it out, they just changed, I don't know, yeah, too much, but.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll take her out, that I have to.
They want me to pay for this, you know, stuff, I, I just put it on there to feel like this, when you provide more service, for what you're charging it, like.
Yes.
You're gonna pay sixty dollar a month on the nineteen seven.
No, still, it's my thing, yeah, shoot. Dang.
The same thing.
Of nothing.
Of nothing.
We have nothing. So what's the reason of, of natural bounds?
See, that's my mom.
Now she's a mom.
That's a canyon.
So, but it's the same.
I mean, take a look at your phone book. What you used to get, you know, it used to be like this.
This is so cute.
Oh, alright, they're in.
And now the new one has got this much advertising and this much.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm very important, this is.
Just to help you pay it.
Oh, yeah. Uh, other jump discussion items, um, H strippers should be in, um, end of the week, early next week. I think I said that, March November, should be here soon, uh, Hard Man Street's gonna open, exciting.
I don't know why you didn't handle it, that was, that was huge.
Uh.
So now can they go eighty miles an hour?
Yep.
Woo!
Um.
They've already done that.
Yeah.
That could be a high school boy, like.
Or whoever's leading the race track.
Uh-huh.
It all adds up, um, seed, uh, Cedars are supposed to be in, uh, tomorrow, do the seeding there on Hard Man Street.
Okay.
That will be one of the last things, off of the contract.
Stay you though, roll straw.
So we'll have the Wood Excelsior Matt, um, uh, at those ramps.
That would be better.
What, what change?
Wow. What, what? You looked in your yard.
I take that, it's a little short, like that.
I cut my ears with my eyebrows.
Oh.
About it.
Did you get your nails done? Nope, I, you didn't have that one.
No, my daughter got it done the other day.
That was quick. Um, yeah, so there will be some, everything will be mulched, some of it will be the roll, roll on mulching on the, just.
Right.
Be up to the rest of it, it'll just be a straw.
Right.
Knifed it. Uh, so, yeah, we're still doing tear up on H, on H twelve right now, uh. Going a little slower than expected, I guess, uh, that, uh, the outside edges on that, still felt it's pretty, pretty solid, but. We had such bad wheel paths running, that, that needs to be torn up, so, so that's going a little slower than expected, but, um. I would still imagine if it's not done this week, but, uh, if I need to do it next week, um. Silver City Highway is moving right along, uh, like Hawaii need them, and how they putting in.
No, it's not going well.
It's not?
No, it's not going far enough.
Where's it going to be?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put vehicles across my driveway.
Huh?
You can't believe it, you've got more upset people than you can think of, man, we're gonna gas them right now, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're up the gas, yeah.
Cause only four of the people left.
It should be quick, it should be quick process, so they, they kept the leveling course down on the north boundary, the big south boundary down today. Then they'll put on flexible inner layer lift, and then they'll put on the surface course lift, so we'll look. On day two, if everything goes well, they'll be done with that, the surfacing.
But next year.
Whatever, do they have to paint it then?
Yes.
Next year, Corey.
Yep, yep, and, and they got a little shoulder work, and that's really about it, so this should be a pushback, it's, yeah, I'd be for.
Are we still live?
We were gonna say.
Did you put us back on?
We, we.
I think, we thought you once, but.
Yeah, we're still.
So the next year will go from Gaston through Silver State.
Twenty twenty two.
Oh.
With, so we say.
What happened at twenty one? We got pushed back because we had to get this with constraints back, but that was. Moving to the new, um, distribution.
Who's Nixon? Nixon construction.
Nixon?
Nixon.
So.
So, how's all that, so, we'll have that.
Well, it was a, 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 reach R P A eighteen decision to go to the new, um, dispersment of those swap funds. Instead of, with the past, when a county project said, we wanna do eight miles of resurfacing, this is gonna be two million dollars. We know we haven't had a project for a few years, um, we can produce some money for now, um, instead of the give and take, high balance, low balance. It's now, uh, here's your, here's your twenty five percent of the fund, you bank it and then do a project within how you want.
This is. Sure. Or roll it over for another project.
Because, and that was great for the other three companies, because.
Right now.
Sure.
They were, they were, uh.
Taking our share.
Well, they're, they're at the right end, where Kevin had, had not spent the money for a while, and so we, we were on board to, to do a few projects. And so we just with constraint, and we had a, moved all our projects in your bag, and, and, and then we. We're now banking that basically four hundred thousand dollars a year to do these projects.
We mainly moved the Michigan Rattlers, and the Rock County.
Yeah, Rock County was the one pushing it, because they can take that four hundred thousand each year, so, pull that out with another six hundred thousand dollars hopefully, so.
And I understand what they were thinking, if you're not gonna use that money, then I'll go with my project, but then, like Kevin said.
In the next year, you get their cut.
Exactly.
But I mean, Mills County was like, two hun, they were due for, you know, two million dollars, three hundred million dollars, we, we two hundred twenty first street, that cut us down to two hundred million dollars. It's not two hundred, two million dollars, and so.
Then they swap it.
I mean, I, I'm okay with it now, it just kinda sucks that we have to wait.
It's gonna hurt them too in the long run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just sort of heard them make them wash their paintings like ours. At this time when they did it, up them, but.
A little bit there.
That's really helpful.
It's your turn to do though.
Uh, oh, Lonnie, I kinda briefly talked to Carol Hunter about, uh, our utility permit application fee, uh, the one thousand dollar. Pre-inspection fee that we charged, we give ninety percent of that fee back after the project's complete, we've been able to use it to, to require contractors to come back to correct problems. And I, I notice, I, I don't, I don't plan to wave for anybody, and I encourage you guys not to wave it, especially on a.
Come on on our project, are you gonna require a fee for, for us, even though they're running the cable? We're gonna, they're gonna do a little bit, we're doing a million dollars worth, so you're gonna require for us or?
For us, are we putting, sending in the application?
Well, are we sending the application in? Jeez, I don't know that part yet, we're not that far, I'll, I'll tell you next Wednesday.
We'll talk about that.
They'll be doing it, but it's ours, and we have to.
We still require, um. Be consistent, uh.
And so every road that we're working in will have to have a permit?
We allowed them in the past to have whole, a whole project on one permit, on one application, so, so instead of.
Okay. Okay.
And then it's they.
Eighteen roads.
Cause, yeah, cause that's what we're gonna end up.
Eighteen applications to be eighteen roads, one application, that's what we did, uh, Western Iowa Network had an application that went through, uh.
Okay.
Cedar Hills, that went to Iowa Road, North Twenty First Street, Kane, Hillman, I mean, it was on eight different roads, but we, we did one application, so.
But that was my project.
They, they, they paid the pre-inspection fee for that, we haven't paid them, we haven't reimbursed them yet, because it's still on, surpairs on trench failures.
Sure.
Another reason.
I got a message, uh, Stephanie about will not be able to attend today, so we're gonna, uh, the next item on the agenda will come to you from now, but then.
Maybe next week I'll, I'll bring in. I do. Look.
Does she have her mask on?
I don't know.
Doesn't say, doesn't say anything about it.
It says fine.
We don't, we don't identify that, so if, it, what is it they say, if it's not discussed, then, then it's, it's muted.
Alright, Carol, you can come to the top of these.
Okay, yeah, just throw them on my chair, please, do you have a county property?
Uh, no, but I'm aware of it.
Oh, would I have talked about that?
The sale of.
The sale.
I, I imagine this is someone I've been talking about Lonnie, no, uh.
Yes.
Is Karen, is Karen?
Yep, yep.
Very exact.
That was my baby.
Oh.
I have another command, and I will. Let's take this first. Let's get the little beacon up here. Okay, this is Lynn Goose's farm, they're in yellow, this is Miller, Richard Miller. Richard Miller. And between the two, this is Mills County. We've got a little over a quarter mile by roughly twenty feet strip.
It's landlocked.
Landlocked, this is a private drive. The Richard Millers, in the middle of nowhere. If you zoom up, it actually covers Richard Miller's shed, and a bin. And I don't see the reason for us to own it.
How, how did that even happen?
Nobody really knows, I even asked Lyle, and he's older than her, so, that's recorded, so.
Had to do something, it had to do something with, uh, getting the property.
Yeah.
How does that happen?
Yeah, we're just not sure how or why, but, um, we own that piece that's highlighted, and we own this piece that's highlighted. So Mr. Miller and Mr. Goose have come to me and said survey. They wanna run the line, this, this is a division line right here, the blue line between Miller and Goose.
Okay.
Gonna run this up like this.
Okay.
This piece will be Miller's. Piece over here will be Goose's. And they'll start paying taxes on it every year. Unless we want it for an airstrip or something. It's getting one.
So.
Doesn't Goose, doesn't Goose own the property on both sides?
Goose, no, Goose is on one side, Miller's on the other.
Yeah, in the, in the big fields there?
In the big fields here, yep, 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 this is Miller on the north. And this is Goose on the south.
So what, so what brought this all on, me, why, why now?
They just, they knew it, and they wanted, and they came to me and said they wanna get it cleaned up.
Because it's just junk tree.
Cause it's ours, no, 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 this, this blue line is actually on the fence too.
No, it's.
So everything that's on the, everything south of the fence that we own is on Goose's side, and Miller's side, cause Miller owns over here. Miller actually owns this piece and this whole farm up here.
So, he's got gray bands on our property?
Yes.
For how many years?
Interesting. Oh, jeez, well, Lyle worked in the county when he was in high school, so that would have been in s, mid, late, mid, late sixties, and it was like this.
For a while. Well, then, then he owes us back pay for red roll it.
Red, yeah, we don't owe them, he could charge us or.
So we own the property.
You know, um, you know, up for so many years.
Absolutely, so, what do we do?
We can do that against the county, or city.
So, I'm gonna put all the taxes.
Oh.
So they just, they just wanna clean it up, um, they, they'll pay the survey, they'll, we'll just have to have a deed given to, from us to them, Tyler's aware of it, I, I showed him last week.
So now what?
Zero expense to us, we're gonna start getting patented on it.
So.
Yeah, we're good with it, so, we, we don't need any action today, but.
So they will pay for the survey and they will share in the, in the.
So basically.
They'll, 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 they'll handle all costs, we just need to make the deed up. Two deeds. Maybe three, depending on what the auditor requires. Cause this piece over here, there's actually a division line.
Who, whose is that?
That's ours too.
Yeah, but who's, who's ground next to it?
Uh, Goose, I know that's mass, this is Goose, and this is Miller.
Both in mass.
But between the two, Goose and Miller, I think Goose and Miller. Those, those are the two that are, that want it, those are the two that are paying for it.
So Lonnie, what, how, what's the, um, the length of that, is that a acre, is that between?
An acre?
An A to B.
Oh, I haven't finished all the math up yet, but it's.
So we're.
Sixteen hundred by, I don't think it's forty, six sixteen hundred by thirty. An acre, well, the whole thing's gonna end up being an acre.
Yeah, okay. So we're, we're just basically talking about it, but we're not.
Yeah, there's no action to really take right now, unless we, do we have it as a formal action?
Okay. We do.
Um, I guess we could do a formal action and move forward with it. Ty, Tyler's aware of it, he said when you get it all cleaned up on the boards end, let you know the legal descriptions, that I'll write for him, and then, uh, he'll make the deed up to Miller, he'll make the deed up to Goose.
I just don't understand how that ever, I mean, I.
Just how, I mean you'd be amazed by how many little like lost properties are out there.
Yeah.
We've got one here and one there, that's, I thought it was actually coming.
We do.
You've, you've had me one on beacon, up here on two hundred and twenty first.
Yeah.
Four miles back here. Yeah, I remember that too.
Yeah. I've got a thing on that too, they, I've got this.
I mean, we need to find the dedication from, Pincers.
A Pincers tradition. We could definitely quarter, get us something and see them a little.
Cause there's a piece of dead property up there at Pincers.
We need to find a place of dedication.
Put Richard on it, he's been out parking paint, paint parts for the last two days.
It's, it's, it's available and it can be found, it's just a notebook for you, yeah.
I'm just gonna make a motion and we'll move forward with the sale of county property to the property owners.
To the, both adjacent property owners, yeah.
And I second that, let's get it cleaned up.
We've got a motion. Any second, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Have any for back on the text?
Viper extension, is that me or you?
Oh you, you sent it to Jackie.
Well, we're just gonna be bold with that project, right Lonnie?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said, Jackie, yeah, it's Western, I would never have gotten back to me yet.
Oh okay, so just take all this stuff.
Demlo was supposed to be it, but he uh didn't get it here today. It's kinda what we're getting together later in the week.
Hey what?
Yeah, there's nothing really act on.
Thanks Cory, thanks for the ride.
Wow.
Okay, okay.
There you go, okay, so you can essentially, oh, here now, okay.
Alright, it's ten thirty. Uh next item, item on the agenda is to accept the bids for the demolition, oh. Yeah, well.
We're gonna, yeah, we're, we're gonna talk to the, yeah, we have accepting the bids and then I think turn it over to.
To accept the bids. We did accept them though, so.
No, yeah, no, they're gonna talk.
So they did accept them.
We received, yes, they accepted them and put the spreadsheet together and then I guess we'll open it to Alexis takes point.
Okay, you guys are up.
Okay, um so we received. Seven bids that ranged in prices, so the latest um Excel spreadsheet that we sent have them in order from um. Less cost to most cost, and then we also checked for uh the other items that were requested. The D O L number, references, work experience, insurance. And um also what I did on the final bid tab is takes out. We included the properties, cause we had to submit this, we included the properties that have opted out, but then. You as the board of supervisors have accepted that opt out or approved it for, for FEMA purposes, so those were included in the, in the original bid tab. What I did was I took out those properties, I left them on the sheet, but you will see them at the very bottom. They did not, um they were not included in the sum. And what that did was it did not change the order, but that for um. Con- contracting in South West Side parking lot list um in their, their price when I, when I took out those properties that have opted out.
So.
So it, it didn't change the order, but just those two, which um. We still have National Concrete Cutting Company as the, the top um. At one point four, one point five, and we have Nixon Construction at the, at the end range at um two hundred and seventy six, seven fifty.
So, so this.
Uh we also wanted to point out that South West Side parking lot.
We got to do this or that?
Did not include um the, the initial information that was requested in their bid. Simply gave um cost and um insurance, they provided insurance. So we just wanted to point that out, that they were ones that did not commit. Their, their bid technically was not complete.
Time out.
Alexis?
Can, can we, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, go- going back to when you first start talking, you have this total number for each person that bid. Listed at, list, listed at, at the end of each.
Yep.
Person.
Correct.
Then on the bottom, you have a list of, you have a list of houses, what, what is this list of addresses on the bottom, that is what you pulled out?
That is what I pulled out, because those people have signed opt out forms.
So, so you removed these off of their bid tabs per their cost estimate?
Yes, I simply just, their cost is not for those eleven properties, that cost is not included in the total.
No, see the, the, the set that Larry was talking about, the original, they set it in before they subtracted it out.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that, it's just.
So we, yeah, we, we simply, we got them, they, they put a price for those. But those properties have opted out and now the board has. Has also opted them out in, you know, in FEMA's eyes for Terry's purposes.
Alright, so brush.
I didn't feel the need, I wanted to give you the most up to date information by taking those properties out, so you got a clearer picture of the total cost for each one. Even though the list still could change slightly, but I didn't think that it was worth. Even including those eleven, even though we got, we got prices for them, which is good information to have. I did not take that away, I just did not include it in the total.
But we don't have the list for the three, we don't have any amounts for the ones that are in the three that we added to the list, right?
Yes, that will be, that will be a change order to add those three properties, so the change order essentially will be taking out the eleven and adding three. So getting a cost on those.
What uh, what am I, why am I seeing bids at fifty dollars? Did they have a uh specification as to where that would come from, because that's, that's a little.
That's just insane.
Those are the ones where there's no house or anything left, that was just the foundation only?
Right.
Because I looked at both of those, cause I was kinda confused too, but it's the ones, uh the properties that had already taken their homes out and it's just whatever's left.
Are the wells done? Are the subjects closed?
Well, that, that, that's true, but then why are others bidding them at twenty five, twenty eight thousand?
The good question, I don't know, I mean that was a question I had too, but.
I think. Yeah, I think the contractor something, hasn't been something on each of them, so some of those homes are the ones that the homeowners came out and said, hey, we're not demolishing our property.
Yeah, and they did that. Yeah.
So they just stuck a number in there, so that way they felt their bid was complete, that's my guess.
I guess, okay, it makes sense, but it's.
Yeah, I didn't ask, talking about, looking at something that says fifty dollars and then something for twenty eight thousand.
Yeah, I know, that, that went through me too.
Who's.
Who is even Nixon Construction?
Well, yeah, yeah, if you want.
Who is?
We get recommendations, I don't know if we get recommendations, but there's about, there's more on this one than I would have maybe recommend.
Okay, they, they, they're gonna lose the deal, they're just gonna talk to them.
Hey Alexis, Alexis.
Oh. Alex.
Alexis.
Yes.
Okay. Who is Nixon Construction, who are they, where are they from?
Let me look.
Capital Club, I believe.
Yeah, I'll go look here.
I, I just don't think these numbers are right.
What's this?
I didn't get it.
I don't have a capital.
I did.
And I did it either.
No, because Tyler asked me something about it and I said I didn't get that.
Wait, I sent the, the next file of the actual bid, the full bid.
Yeah, Larry's got it.
Right. Yeah, they, they are, they're readjusting, what's, what's happened here is, is that the initial spreadsheet was sent out on the H N. Sammy said, had to be readjusted to take out the properties that she made a fraction to take out, they're done, the people have signed letters.
I thought that was our job to do that.
That we did, that's what she did, that's what she did.
Because there are R P went out with those properties on there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, no, because.
Mr. Solos, your total bid's seven hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred dollars.
No, because what we did is.
That's all I need, that's all I need.
So it's your.
You included these properties.
Well, we made a major discount at the end on all these properties, we're a hundred, we're a hundred and fifty thousand lower.
Your, your bid was changed.
Count wire when it comes.
Changes our bid, this is one we were never aware of.
What's being bid, they, it, it looked like they just did a prop score down the line, hey, this is six thousand first, but they didn't actually. I, I, I'm not gonna say they didn't actually uh take any consideration, each individual unique property, um like maybe others did, but.
Yes, this is ridiculous.
They could have, and, and maybe they filled it each one six grand, but if I'm looking at theirs where they're at six grand on one. And the rest of them are at twelve, eighteen, twenty five thousand, but then on others, they're at six grand and then the other bids are at five, fifty two hundred. It looked like they just did a, a, a overall average per.
Um it since, since there's a question in here, since we have uh self instruction in here, his bid is eight twenty four, three hundred. But what Swiftka did, since their you approved was the last beat on there, if you're aware, we poured, you approved taking formally each properties out. And eventually we'd have to add the other three, so what Alexis did, she took the bids that she had from the R P where it was sent out, and everything on it. Uh and took those bids that came in from all contractors to say, off the list and readjusted what their bid would probably look like, would look like. Uh in taking those properties out since they said we don't wanna do this, and the more formal action, you made that decision. That's what you're seeing eight twenty four, on you sell for example, eight twenty four, three hundred is what Ryan did. If we take those properties that he bid on out, it would look like with a change order, it would look like seven seventy one, eight hundred would be this bid. It would have to be re-custumed with this construction company, it would be the same with any, all these other companies that are applying an application also. So I think Alexis just wanted to see, if we took those properties out, uh and what they bid on those properties, this is what their bid would look like. And that's why you see eight twenty four, three hundred going down to seven seventy one, eight hundred thousand. I, I'm gonna add to all these and put the readjusted numbers on here, everybody's went down equally for those properties that you took formal action on and took out through uh last week, I believe. So uh, I give you a, I'm kinda confused about the disparity and you all are, about a couple of companies are way down here at the lower spectrum, which makes me suspicious.
That doesn't bother me nearly as much as changing your bid.
And uh and really.
What you, what you think you did was, it, I, I see where you think you're justified in it.
Well, I'm not justified in, I'm just saying.
But I, but I've bid several projects throughout my uh career and I've put, I've bid this high and left some gravy at the end. For nothing, I've bid these at nothing and picked up some bids and stuff.
Did you? Do you have the set where the original bid, the original bid amounts are in?
Maybe that's what the other contractors have bid when they did this, and then we changed it, so I, I have a problem with that.
Do you have that sheet with this, like this? The ones they were, went from a million or what, or you know, what they were, do you have that copy?
This is the uh.
The original?
Yeah, this is the original sheet here.
Okay, what, the, okay, so, yeah, so Lonnie would like to.
My.
This is, this is the.
Yeah, that was the original before they took out of that, so you've gotten here.
Yeah, I, I see all that, and they all bid apples for apples on their sheet.
Let me. Right.
But we changed, their bid was changed.
Right, we don't have to change that bid, we can take those bids right there.
This is just, this is just proposal from Swiftka, when analysis of bids that came in, these are the bids, okay?
Yeah. No.
This has their amount, which is equating to this.
That, what you have is not anywhere in our sheet provided to us, Larry.
No, I just printed these up, but it's fine, yes.
Somebody, somebody's taken those bids that you received and we did not receive and did.
I think you have it.
Think, and did their own homework and changed them and I have a problem with that, that's all I'm saying.
No, all, all your contract did was give you a spreadsheet based on those properties you took formal action on, is taken out.
I mean, I got a copy of it.
I understand.
It still has to be a change order, make the contractor selective to do that, uh to, cause you're gonna have to, you see, based on your prices.
Right. Right.
And so they're gonna have to figure out, okay, on these new properties, go with that bid, so it's a change order, that, that's all Alexis did. The original document dated the eighteenth, and that's why I questioned that, as the original bid, these are the bids right here. These bids are the bids that came in formally from every contractor, all Alexis did, like here one.
But you've seen those bids, Larry, we're acting on something that we haven't even seen yet, we haven't seen.
That's why I came up, I don't, I have no idea why a package was made, okay? And if I would've been here in the Jasper, we'd have, you'd have a large stack of paper in front of you wanting, like.
I just don't think this Nixon Construction is.
Cause I looked at every one of these.
We should have.
It should be illegal.
I looked at every one of these, uh and uh, and uh reviewed them and made some comments on some. And things that I would hope to be in are like, you know, the work history, some had related work history, some didn't. Some of them addressed their workforce, their employment, their personnel, uh which is important, I think, to you, cause you need for the scope of this work. Uh if we close on X houses, we have a clock ticking, you know, with FEMA, their number. Uh then we need to make that, that timeline, so it's all based on coordination of assistant county attorney's offices, they take in closure. If we didn't, we can't afford to close a house, like thirty houses in one hit.
Right.
Cause you're, that contractor might have a challenge on it and making ninety days window.
You hit the nail on the head, Larry, you said it was based on coordination, but the people that are making the decisions were part of the coordination, which I have a problem with.
So I, I looked at these and I understand what Swiftka is just showing me, they're showing you what it would be.
Sure, so do I, so do I. I understand that, yeah.
But the bid still is here, and without the change order.
Right.
Now.
So the sheet that was given to us really is not their bid.
It's basically what it would look like taking the homes you approved take out. Those are taken out, formal action after the R P went out, and all the contractors you have to deal with is what they did on the job. That R P probably shouldn't have gone out for. You just play that.
What is this here?
This is the original bids, those are the original bids with nothing taken out, on the bottom.
On the bottom. And that's what's on their sheets right here. This has all the properties that you took formal action into that, audio, so.
So these are the bids that you want to accept, I think they were just trying to, if that was the case, for the change order, offer up that second set.
Yeah, would it might, would.
But yeah, so the bids that you would be receiving are the ones, you're ready to.
I think we look at.
Well, I'll talk to you something else.
Right, Terry.
Oh Terry.
So the reason what they did it this way, or the reason we all agreed to do it this way is, is probably not to delay the, the bidding process much longer. On the, the, the simple fact is, when we got changed, the uh number of properties that you guys were looking at requiring demolishing. It was midstream towards bidding process with demolition, so I recommend to keep that the same, receive the bid. And then do the change order to remove the however many properties, eleven properties, and then bring back on three or four, because effectively, it shouldn't. Change drastically the, the bidding process for those properties, because there, there's, there's not much difference between the properties themselves, and if you actually pin, as you're looking at bids that were provided. There's not a huge gap. Based on each contractor's bid for each property that it would make a, a significant difference. If you take off one property and, and replace it with sec- secondary property. Uh I understand what you're, Lonnie, I understand what you're saying where, you know, these companies are bidding, their bid is based on X number of properties, Nelson. You might be removing them and adding addition, or adding different ones at a lesser amount than uh what they originally bid on, which could potentially change your venture. Uh but I don't. Uh but I don't know that it's gonna change it that that drastically, because they're they're not that far spread out. It's not, I don't think it'll, personally, I don't think it'll affect their uh their setup and their dispatch on each one. Because it, you know, initially, we're not talking about closing on every single one of the properties all at once anyway. So it it's gonna have to be a phase, phase process. Uh so they're gonna have to go out and pull some time to do this.
Terry, Terry, I understand what you're saying and and my problem is not the total dollar amount. My problem is we have contractors that submitted bids. And then the bids were changed and delivered to us and I have a problem with that. That's 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 my problem.
No, I understand that. No, I I know exactly what you're what you're uh getting at and and I can appreciate, and I appreciate that. And obviously, you have the the original spreadsheet in front of you now, um to to see the the first, to bridge that gap. What was originally indicated to what Alexis put in there. And 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 the spreadsheet that Alexis put in there, I think, is 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 beneficial for us to know and see on the back end. Sure. Of the approval of the uh, on the approval of the uh 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 bid. So that way we know what to expect. Uh at the end of it. So it's it's, you 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 need to see both and that way you can make that judgment. Uh for what you're going, what you should be approving, what is actually gonna look like on the back.
Wouldn't we have to award a contract and then submit a change order to have a change order take effect, though?
Yeah, effectively, that's what we plan on doing. Uh that's what they just, the plan was going to be. Uh so, yeah, yeah.
So basically, every property, every bid is is basically the estimation of what the contract may look like minus the three we gotta add. Okay, the three we gotta add is not, in fact, yeah, is the same, the same reduction each contractor appropriately, proportionally on his bid on that property. So their numbers will come down appropriately based on those properties, whatever they bid on.
Once they're awarded, once we're awarded.
Yeah. So basically, just just a measure.
First, first this has to happen, then this happens.
Yeah, just just it's just a measure, just just a measure, yes.
Right.
I understand what you're trying to do, it's just.
I just wanted to give you a look, see what.
We're trying to advance, we're trying to advance it as quickly as possible, but because until we get the demo we're in place, the acquisition technically can't be placed. So that's why we're trying to limit our exposure on a timeframe for this. So it it's almost going to uh occur simultaneously where if you were to award the the contractor's bid to X contractors. Then we'll turn right around and do a change order based on your recommendation of the removal of certain properties.
Am I allowed to say something?
Sure.
Okay. Um my my thought on.
Dress yourself, Selena.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jenny with Light Construction. Um my my only thought on this Nixon especially bid is that I know what Light Construction did. And the due diligence that we did and the week, you know, that I put into this, looking up every single property, looking on Beacon. Uh observing all of the outbuildings, writing down that there were ten silos on buildings and things like that. And and that's how we have very specific numbers on each property. So it's disappointing to see that it sure doesn't feel that they did the same type of uh research. And uh, I mean, I, you know, I know it's low bid and I get that, but wow.
Well, well, remember, it's not necessarily a low bid. And and this is where the message come into play when it comes to the uh the criteria that was, that has been set for the uh. For the uh tabulation of this. Uh so, yeah, low bid is a qualifier. Uh but there are also other qualifiers uh that can be scored out appropriately. Uh for the uh for the board of supervisors to take into consideration when they award that bid. So I I don't wanna just leave it out there that low bid is going to win, uh win the day when it comes to this contract. It's part of the process, it's not the only part of the process.
Sure.
Brian wants to talk.
I I would, I would suggest too, there's, there's one of the properties in here that they bid for a dollar. Um we can't even drive our car there for a dollar.
Can you speak up, Brian? They're they're trying to hear you too.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Put your face in it, so you don't.
What, do what?
Put your face in the zoo.
Oh. There, there's one property in here that they bid for a dollar. We're, we are above life by about six thousand dollars on the entire project. But uh my suggestion might be also that you get your asbestos bids back at the same time. Because we're, because that will be a total amount also on the project. And one thing that we can perform is to do the asbestos abatement. And also do the demolition in the same day, which speeds that process up immensely. And you don't have to wait for that asbestos contractor. So I think all those things are important.
Well, that's true. The importance, that's true. But part of this is uh to keep everything uh. To keep everything bas- basically out of the building. We're we're separating the two, uh qualifying bids versus bidding process, between the demolition, the testing, and the baiting as well. Um because you're right, it, you know, if the demo contractor also gets a bid for the abatement, part of it, that could potentially streamline it. However, there's still that process of uh of abating the property, but then also uh certifying the abatement done correctly, accurately by the testing company. So that that process could take place. In this case, we did that intentionally because the number of demo contractors that actually have the qualifications, certifications. To be, to be able to do both is so limited that we're always afraid that it's going to limit the overall scope of and and bidding process. For something of this scale. Uh so that's why we're, you know, we've always said, we're gonna have demolition bidding process, demolition contract. And then we're gonna have an abatement con, bidding process and abatement contract. That does not preclude the demo contractor from also bidding on the uh uh demo or on the uh uh abatement contract as well. If they qualify for it, they can bid on both. They can be uh, that can be taken into consideration in the bids house on it as well. Uh but that, that process is is basically two separate standalone process.
I I agree, except it is for the contractor and I understand why you wanted to do that and uh. Um but for the board of supervisors and the folks that are getting the buyout, it isn't a different process. You already have bid it separately. But for the, for the expediency and to award a contract, it definitely is a factor to to speed the process up. ATC did the the inspections. I don't know if they'll do the monitoring also. But if it works out that they do do the monitoring of the demolition, they would be able to inspect that uh also why they're monitoring the demolition part. It it is, it is multiple.
Yeah, and and likely they won't be doing the monitoring on that. Uh we have, we'll have a separate demo contractor, demo monitor for staff purposes or for those purposes.
Well, even if they weren't the monitor.
And it it could potentially expedite the process. It won't expedite it for the acquisition aspect of it. So the homeowners, they, realistically, they won't have any uh, any situation that's going to hinder their uh closing. Because of the different contractors for that, because everything we're talking about, when it comes to demo contract, demos, as well as asbestos abatement, happens at post closing. So absolutely, then once, you know, once the county takes possession of that property. Uh the only aspect that we're overly clear about and and why we try to get everything put in place before acquisition takes place is we have ninety days. Uh you guys have ninety days, everybody has ninety days for minutes they close to take that property down, make it open space compliant. So that's why we wanna make sure that we, we are ahead of the schedule when it comes to having everything put in place prior to acquisition.
And that's kind of my point is if a demo, if a, if a abatement contractor takes twenty days to get to the project. But I'm just talking big picture, but I will, I will take a turn here on the other part of it. What I would suggest is, and I don't know this for sure, is the, there there was an addendum to, to 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 this RFP. And I don't know for sure, but it is possible that these two contractors that are in the three hundreds. Um for us, our costs are way more than that, just because the amount of wells that have to be uh plugged instead of capped. They're about, around fifteen hundred dollars a piece to do for a contractor. So just with that, uh you know, it, they were bid at, I think there's sixty nine or seventy properties on there. Um just with that, uh you can see that those numbers aren't even feasible. Um number one is you can't bid something for fifty dollars or a dollar if you have to have a well contractor come out for fifteen hundred to plug the well.
No, and and you're right. And this is, and this is uh where I go back to my original comment of low bid doesn't necessarily mean there, doesn't mean. Only qualifier to getting the bid.
Yeah.
It it doesn't. We, it it's based on everything. It's based on qualifications, it's based on uh the due diligence of the bid itself. Whether they they took all the uh, all the necessary aspects into consideration with their bidding process. And it goes back to when I said I I'm concerned over something that I take fifty dollars to uh demo properties. Yes, overly concerned on that. Uh so this is where now it falls into the lap of everybody reviewing it, including board supervisors. Uh looking at the full packet and everything that's gone into the bidding process and making that determination through their scoring sheet. Uh to identify which ones are the most qualified.
Is that something we have to do today? Is that something we have to do today, Terry? Do we have to do that right now?
You don't necessarily have to right now, no. Uh when we originally talked, it was going to be kind of left up to the group. To uh give a a a review and score and then get that to you guys. Um and that way you can look at those scoring sheets. Uh I don't know if you guys wanna be the, in on the scoring of them. Uh I, this this is all up to you on how, on how you wanna roll with this.
You know, I would like to be involved in that process. Well.
I want the acquisition to take place as as early as possible. So whatever we need to do to make that happen, make everybody feel comfortable.
So do I, so do I.
We need to do it and I wanna make sure that it's done uh quickly and soon.
I, you know, I think this is, uh I've looked, I have looked over these actual bids.
I agree.
And just on the more, uh with Nixon, uh very low bids, we all know, not very detailed proposal. Uh I think it meets the basis for the RFP, I put a question mark, but according to Alexis, it did. Uh lacking info on equipment personnel, so we could determine their field operations. Do they have personnel or equipment that's costly handled? Uh ID and T goes in the extra, again, they're on the long side of the bid. Uh they were at three one forty five is what they're going in was. Uh they meet the RFP base requirement. Again, low bid, lack of detail, uh not anything on, again, on equipment personnel, their capability to do it.
That's what bothers me, Larry. You, you have this, you've seen it, you've scored it, but we, we haven't seen this yet.
I mean, I, I, these are not scoring, these are comments only. I'm not scoring anything.
What, what, whatever you call it, you have.
This is to make, to make a very comfortable if you want, that that character.
I'm not gonna blame anyone. We haven't seen it and we're the ones acting to vote on it. So it's our decision that you're, that others are making that we, we haven't even been involved in it. I just have a problem with that. If that offends you, I'm sorry.
No, it's just what Terry said, going in, and I didn't make this decision. Going in was, is to be grading, see if they meet the spirit of the RFP. That's what the contractor, Swiftco, do, which they get, which John does not, use graded RFP, and that's the red one. And and that uh the members were supposed to go over this. I did expect a grading spreadsheet. You know, you sit there, have a virtual, you know, first level grading, proposal con, some of the comments I made about two days already would be things I'd wanna annotate. I'd wanna let you know, so you can make that, that good judgmental decision on uh how much information did we get on the proposal? And we know who these people are anyway, cause previous relationships we have with them, uh and their performance system. Uh those are important attributes for this amount of money you're in. And remember, this is federal dollars coming in. There is a match requirement, which the state is trying to make that match for us. So really, we're being good stewards of federal tax dollars, which is really our tax dollars. So uh those are, go ahead, Terry.
So let's, let's, let's capitalize this slightly, uh with with my perspective and and it's fully well received and fully well taken.
No, I'm, Terry, I'm gonna interrupt you. This, this hasn't been well taken. This, this whole thing is a flop. I've sat through hundreds of bid operations and stuff, but I've never seen anything like this. Somebody didn't do all their work on it before we got it. It's put egg on our three faces down here to the point where, how can you award a bid? With with the things you have. You people were supposed to sit down and weed these out, is my understanding. Is that correct? I mean, you was, you was supposed to get something to us before we had this meeting. And we don't have it. So I don't know who dropped the ball up there or whatever, but it's, it's not fair to the bidder the way it's been handled.
Central.
No, and and that's very well understood. And yeah, you should have had a scoring sheet in front of you. Yeah, you should have had. Now, when it comes to beating these out, I'll, that's clearly, because we wanna make sure that you guys have everything. To make a, a uniform and and uniform judgments when it came to these, this bidding process. Uh it it was tasked onto us, from my understanding of you guys, to basically go through this process, review it. And then ultimately give you the, give you the capability of taking our record, taking the group's recommendation to uh consider these, this process. Uh so that's, that's fine. I mean, I, if you guys wanted, in turn, if you guys wanna be the ones also reviewing these packets and scoring the, the contractors. I I'm perfectly fine with that. Uh my, my recommendation, my suggestion, because of time, is to get the packet to you guys this week. Or in fact, this week, but today or tomorrow, you guys review it, have your score sheet individually. And then we can do a collaboration, then Tuesday, board supervisors next meeting, that's when the bid needs to be left. And that way we can push the thing forward, we can start the acquisition process and 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 make this, make this go. Uh the last thing I wanna do is do the thing, be brought out in the next, you know, several weeks, uh to see if there's a, still the home. Uh within, within these hours.
We may come, we may come up with the, the exact same recommendation, but not being involved in any of the, any of this scoring or bids. And then bid revisions, which scares me more than anything. I mean, what was presented to me was not their actual bid. Had we acted on that, we all would have been in trouble. Yes, the numbers will or may get to those numbers, but that is not what they bid and I have a problem with that. It's, 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 it's just kind of.
No, and that, and that's kind of sample. I, and I can, and I can definitely appreciate that. Uh you know, that when the, when the.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing.
This was being with the other, it was tasked or through your contract with, with Swiftco to kind of generate that, those packets. And and collectively put it out to us for our recommendation on on uh. On who and what, where he gets it. So, no, that's fine. Uh let's shift out slightly. You guys review it.
Why did they open up the area here?
You guys are changing the way you have another facility on the.
Why, why?
Um.
They started changing everybody's bid around because.
Okay, Terry, okay. Here's what I see. Alexis, here's what I see. Leader's scoring sheet matrix, the places for comment. For each, or we can use for each of the, of the applicants. Uh number two, I'm concerned that if the board takes action on the bids as given, then really, that's a contract. Okay? And they sign a contract or whatever it is, if you, what do you use, national?
Then you have a change order. Then you remove the properties.
Then you have a change order. The thing is, is that, or we need to go back to these contractors and say, we need an amended bid, taking these properties out. And we need it as soon as possible, which means all the contractors will probably do, maybe not, because of logistics, time and travel, your equipment, right? Cause, cause the reports in the county may cause difference cost adjustments, depending on this. Uh do we owe it to the contractors to allow them to know these are properties and addresses have signed, they want out? We need an amended bid and we need it by this date if you can do it. We need an amended bid and we need it by this date if you can do it. In that way, you're looking at their amended bid, because there could be a difference in the bid a little bit. Again, if we're taking a property, two properties out or way up north, that's fuel depreciation and time off them. And, and I don't know whether they calculate to that magnitude level or not, but if they did, do you wanna give them the property to do it? And that would, and, and, and really, and then you can add the other three in to look at, and we'd be done of it, it'd have to be a quick turnaround. Again, what Terry says, time is of the essence, the other option is, is that you get the screen sheet to the board, uh, we have a goodbye, y'all, and everybody scores, and then hopefully next week we have, they have a, a forum, uh, to, so the board can discuss what they've seen amongst themselves and they become the summary of the rule sheet, with the understanding that it'll improve this original contract that an awarded contractor that gets the award will know that there's going to be a change order as, as the chair sent. So, so I don't know which is the best, but magically do, uh, whatever, but I know that, uh, we need to do either or.
Would we receive the original bid amounts today or not?
That's what you're receiving.
Yeah, receiving, you don't acting on it, but are you receiving the original bids?
Yeah, you have to receive the original amounts, which is that other sheet that you're on, it's going to be, because that's what you're going on right now.
You're not acting on it, you're just receiving.
You're taking the first piece, you remember, except that's demolition, that's all you're doing today, you're gonna do that.
Not gonna award.
You're not gonna take the second one, each, you're gonna table that, I would say, I would advise, tell them.
So we're, we're gonna make a motion to.
No, you're not gonna, you're just gonna have received the original bids on the second card. And that's it, nothing more, and then you'll get.
Those, those bids, we received them.
Yes, but you're not, you're not.
There'll be no changing of them or anything, then, we received them, right?
If, if that's what you do, you've received them, then you get the bid sheets and the things, and then next week, if you're ready, you would award.
But what we're accepting are these bids that are not right, the original, well, the second one, the first set.
No, no, they are right.
The second one, so the second one's gonna give us our, our.
Well, yeah, second set, the original amount is what was bid.
That is the bid, that's.
First you guys, first you guys decided you're gonna take Larry's recommendation on doing amended bid process to remove the properties and add the others. If you wanna do it that way, I would accept this right now, I would go back to contractors to get them.
That's where I'm at, Terry. I don't think these are, these are acceptable.
This has just go out subject to change, that was noted in the RFP, so the contractors were aware that that list could change, just so you know.
And one of the contractors.
Remember that list can change at any given point, and even after the contractor, it's looking, yes, we all know it.
And the buyer?
It must constantly change.
We could say no.
That, that was included in the, in the RFP and, um, each property will be given a notice receipt on an individual level.
Tyler, what do you recommend?
You're awful quiet. Tyler.
Wake up.
So, I guess we, uh, we, we all agreed to try and just do it with a change order, that way we can get it done and potentially start closing in October. If we wanna completely amend the RFP and swap out the thirteen or so properties that we're moving on and off, you're gonna come to a, a final amount before people start dropping off again once we get to closing, because I know that some people are gonna end up deciding, even once we get, you know, towards closing, that they're gonna change their mind. And just, I, I'm trying to get this started as soon as possible, I've got, I just wanna start closing on these, that, that's, so whatever you guys feel comfortable with, I, I think the, the cleanest would be to amend the RFP, give contractors another week or two to.
One week.
To submit bids, um, I guess the whole room to discuss this, just kind of assume that we could, um, make a decision based off of the properties that were provided and then work with the contractor as far as change orders going forward, um.
And there will be.
I don't know, that's, I, I think either, either process works.
Some people will still not do it. And what have you.
Yeah, they'll find something, there, there will be change orders, they, they have on every contract, but change orders don't scare us much.
Well, I'm not gonna make a decision on this today.
No, we don't think that's.
On something.
Oh, what you wanna do?
Whether we're not gonna do it, or whether we're gonna do it, or RFP, or re- redo the RFP and give them a week to rebid, um.
I think that's fair.
We have to do something.
That's fair.
Are you gonna have very good bids come back in, very legitimate bids that they've seen what other contractors have already bid?
I'll tell you in a week.
See what this is gonna, see what this, see, what this is gonna do, now that these numbers are out, yeah, these contractors really have the numbers are out.
They're public, they're public speaking, anyone that wants to see him can get him. It's not just the two.
Just not handled properly, I don't care, Larry.
Well, the thing is, this, this whole.
No, the, the thing is, they should have had bid at all. This is a bid you bid, brought them to us, we made our mind from there, then you have your change order after that.
Communication just wasn't very good, scared me.
They got this messed up with, they have this high bid, low bid, oh, we're gonna subtract this, well, how can you change a contractor's number?
If I might defend that, this second document, you should have had this document in effect, number one, okay? This, that's why I carried it up here, because this is all the size with the original bid. A lot of these contractors, we got summarized in this document, it had to be calculated by SWPCO, they just start throwing in the fight. A lot of these contractors are just, they just met the minimum requirements on our RFP. There was several contractors that gave more information as you would see in a large project like this.
And I would like to see those.
And, and, but again, my opinion is it could have been more detailed than that for this larger project. And that I think a couple contractors just assumed that we knew their capabilities because of previous relationships, which that's true. But when you're bidding something, you need to bid from the big picture, you need to bid like, nobody knows what I do. And that means everything, my capabilities, my past practices, my references, my equipment, my personnel, you need to know that, hey, if I got other projects going on, am I gonna be able to devote enough time to demolition in a timely fashion to meet the county's requirements? That should be considered, everybody in.
Larry?
Yes.
So I just, I had a, I just got bounced off, I got, I got mid, mid conversation of what you just said. All right, tell me, did, did somebody say that we need to go back to the contractors that have revised their initial bid?
I, I don't, you know, I, my, what I recommend, we're now, I've talked around circles about this, they may want, so you don't want, they need to accept the packages if they wanna do that, they, but I think they ought to table the decision so they can grade, they can be part of the grading process, just saying what I mean.
I don't think going back to the contractors that we feel are inadequate and telling them, hey, make it more adequate is.
No, I'm not gonna advocate that, no, I'm just saying that what I saw in the bid submitted, maybe we need to go with the bids submitted as they are, with the base value of them and make the decision, now that I thought it out a little bit more.
Score.
And score them as submitted, because then it's fair and equitable. Now, we're changing the way, but like.
This is what we were talking about doing, and then doing a change order on the back of the other property. So that, that's why, I think for, personally, what my recommendation, which takes from what it is, what my recommendation, I say, score it. You guys get the package, you guys take the next week and score it, take a look at it, and then we reconvene on the board supervisors' meeting next week, make that decision, and then pull the change order on the back. Now we'll take the time, otherwise you're looking at prolonging this for at least another two to three weeks. And, and like Tyler said, that's concerning, because you, you face the real possibility of losing people, especially now that we're going into fall and winter of, of making this happen, so that's my recommendation, what it's worth.
And they can get us the packets, I'm sure. You got, you got. I did not get that, I didn't.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, I just wanna jump in here and say that they were all sent out to the group on Friday. I did not, and I did not include the board of supervisors, but our, our core buyout team group, they were sent, the, the whole bid package, the tabulation of the whole bid were sent out Friday afternoon.
Alexis, aren't the board of supervisors, weren't we supposed to know and act on it?
Yes, yes.
So with a lack of information.
Friday, they were due Friday at nine AM, and I, and we tabulated them, we had multiple eyes look on them because like others have said, some were not added up total, so we put them in an Excel spreadsheet side by side, you add them up, and they were sent out Friday afternoon to our buyout group, and it was the assumption that the board of supervisors were going to get them right away on Friday, when they were sent out. We sent them to the county on Friday, so I just wanna say that. And then, um, but I do apologize for not including the score sheet. We should have included a score, I should have made a score sheet, and that will be sent out, um, immediately after this, the score sheet. We reviewed them, but it's ultimately the board of supervisors' decis- decisions to make, but I do just wanna say that the county did receive the full bid package Friday at three twenty-eight PM, that's why Larry has them.
Alexis, I'm, I'm just gonna comment on this, man. We have seven people bidding here, you have two that's way off the line, you have two that's too high, you have one that's disqualified, right? That leaves us two people. Why didn't you bring it down to two people like I thought you was gonna do? I mean, it'd been much easier for us.
She, she didn't send the score sheet to think what, if they have.
I don't, I don't think that that's my responsibility to hold this from your view. If they were submitted to the county and we delivered all seven bids that were received, if we, so that you could see, that you could see all of them, if they were due.
Yeah, so I, I, I will take you back though, what Alexis, I mean, I, I, I think you guys have to have visibility of all the bids, whether they qualify, whether they're sufficiently, they're too low, sufficiently considered to high, or the simple fact of the matter is, if you were to get questioned by the contractors, through the process, you know, and, and ultimately, um, how is, and how is.
You guys, yeah, I'll let them, I'll let you know that they're here, or a lot, well, I guess we've gotten, so I can give them to you with the score sheets and then you can look it over, because it's really.
We leave it together and it is or not, I just like to see them.
Full packets of this and this, and not that.
Yeah, you already got the, yeah.
Because that will come later.
It'll probably end up the same way, but.
Yeah, we did, and I've gotten the letter.
And then, then we can, score sheets, Alexis had her staff, and we, and then, uh, which I hit the sheet, and then you can do notes, comments, descriptions.
All right, guys, what do you think?
Yep. That's four.
What do, what do we, uh?
Okay, my, okay, from what I'm hearing is we're going to receive the following bids from the following, um, groups that bid it, and then you will receive the full bid packet and re, and you will score, and a determination will be made next Tuesday. Is that what?
Yeah, we, we, we don't need to go that far, we, we need to accept the bids and there's no action taken on the next one.
Right, right.
But we'll put the rest on the agenda next week and handle that.
Nothing to worry about, this is all by, if you want to score, it's on the score sheet.
Someone else wanna make phone calls or have some questions?
Someone might do it, it's very.
Do we have a motion to accept the bids for demolition?
I accept the motion. Same here, I mean, I, I'm big, I'm sorry, I'm still thinking. I'll make a motion to accept the bids, to accept the bids.
Second. You got a motion in a second to accept the bids for demolition for the theme of buyout properties, is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor? All right. Then there will be no action taken on the approval for the contractors.
Right, yep.
Thank you all, sorry to be a pan easter, but some of this scared me.
It's, it's a big project, scares everybody, it's a project.
Yeah, yeah.
We, I, I wanna get it right though, and I wanna get it right the first time.
As, as do I.
But I, but I also wanna stress the fact that, you know, time is of the utmost.
Well, we, we would move forward as much as you do.
And I will scan a copy of the, Lonnie signed off on the letter with all the properties to be taken off, addresses, and the three could be added on, um, it's addressed to you, Terry, and a carbon to SWPCO, so I will scan that and email it to you guys as soon as the meeting's over.
And that will be a change order after we act. Thank you, guys, see you next week.
All right, thank God.
That's it, I'm gonna attempt it, isn't it?
That is good, yes, um, yeah, so back to the question about, I mean, yeah, what do you want, one else?
Yeah, one else.
Okay, yeah, yeah.